All right. Okay, good afternoon. Today is Thursday, November 19, 2015. It is 4:30 in the afternoon, so we shall begin our meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Ron Rensing.
Here.
Randy Funkert.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you. First on the agenda, public comments. Are there any public comments? You may step up to the podium. Please share your name, first and last, and your comments, please.
Hello? Okay.
Perfect.
My name is Steve Collin, 921 Country Club Road here in Sheldon. I believe at the last meeting, or whichever meeting it was, two meetings ago, my wife, thank you for letting her get up and comment on the Sheldon Crossing Lodge. And as Ron indicated earlier, I wished I'd have been here. I wished I could have been here, but I had two prior commitments. Anyway, since then, my wife and I had written a letter to the editor at the paper. And in that letter, we'd commented that we'd hoped other people in Sheldon would communicate to the city council whether they're for or against the lodge. And I was just wondering whether anybody, any of the members of the city council had heard from the public out there.
I have received one email.
One email, okay.
One email.
And that's been it? Okay.
That's it.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
That was easy. Thank you, Steve. Yep. I did receive one email. It was forwarded to the council as well. I don't know if you all received that. Okay. Okay, are there any other public comments? No? Okay. Then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Just for the record, the consideration of the landfill representative appointment shall be Brad. And our alternate is Todd, still correct? Thank you.
If he is so willing.
Todd? Yes? Thank you. And then I'll share, the student fire applicant is Brandon Winkle. The scat applicant is Diane Cale Steinbeck.
Diane who?
Diane Cale Steinbeck. And we can show the spelling with media afterwards. May I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Thank you. And number three, in new business, considering approval of the 2014 and '15 urban renewal report. We've gone over this before, so I don't know if there's any questions or explanations that needs to happen. And if not, then do we have a motion to approve? Excuse me.
I'll move. Support.
Thank you. One last request, questions or comments? There are none? Roll call, please.
Rensing.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Thank you. Number four on the agenda is considering the first reading of the ordinance on the hotel motel tax. As you are aware, this was approved to go to an increase from 5% up to a 7%.
Just as part of this, to make you aware, one of the provisions in the code, there's a 45-day wait period after the county supervisors certify the election. So we've actually sent a letter to the Department of Revenue requesting them to waive that 45-day requirement. We haven't received response. Micah helped put that letter together to send to them.
Nice.
Basically thus requiring to waive the 45-day requirement so we could start at January 1, 2016. One of the thoughts is, in timeframe, I think we'd have enough time because we'd have two more council meetings due to the fact this was already passed by the voters as far as consideration of waiving the second and third readings. We would then also pass this along to the Department of Revenue to make them aware of our ordinance change, so.
I was going to mention that, too.
So we need a motion for this first reading?
We can pass and go straight to the third reading. So we can pass, we don't have to, if there's a motion made.
The motion would be to waive the second and third readings.
Third reading, thank you.
And then if there's...
So this would be the final reading?
Basically, it'd have to be unanimous, because Greg isn't here right now. It'd have to be unanimous by you four to suspend the rules and pass it on and suspend the second and third readings. Then they'd have to have a separate motion, if that were to be approved, to actually adopt the ordinance today. Or the other motion would be to basically just send it to the second reading.
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third reading.
Great. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And I would like to take a roll call on waiving the second and third reading.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we would need to take a motion to consider approving the ordinance for the hotel motel tax.
I'll make the motion to approve. Support.
Thank you. And a roll call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Next is setting the date and time for our public hearing on the updated comprehensive land use plan. We would like to do that on December 18, 2015, at 4:30 in the afternoon.
Just to point out, this would come as a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. They have approved the updated comp plan with some of the changes that were made, and there's a few more changes that had to be done to the map. So I haven't received the final one yet. It's 177 pages long. So to give you enough time, hopefully here, it was supposed to have it before Thanksgiving or in the very near future. Soon as we get it, we'll email and get that information out to you to give you enough time to actually review it and look at the map and some of the changes in there, so.
177 pages.
Yep.
All right.
Good reading material.
You betcha. And do we have a motion to set this date for the public hearing?
I'll move.
Thank you.
Support.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
And then for our capital improvement plan, we'd like to set the date and time for that public hearing to be at our next meeting, which would be December 4, 2015, at 4:30 in the afternoon.
Make the motion to approve that?
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Rensing.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
And number seven is the discussion regarding the proposed event center project. I'm sure Scott will share with us how his trip to Des Moines went and the presentation on the CAT program, also updates on our most recent pledges that we've received.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Share.
Just a quick update in kind of regards to our presentation. Kurt and I actually attended the Vision Iowa Board meeting yesterday, and it was actually held in Boone.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, generally down in Des Moines or whatever. The reason is, is what they like to do is a lot of the sites where they actually funded projects, there was an old railroad road museum. I'm not sure what it was. It's a long name. But basically, that's where it was held. So it was held in Boone yesterday. So we had the opportunity to make our presentation. There was actually 17 applications that were submitted as part of, as part of this round of applications. They kind of changed the process in which they did it, where they used to kind of take them year-round. You could submit an application kind of whenever you wanted to, and they would consider it. Due to the way the funding comes through the legislature right now, they kind of went to more of a funding cycle. So October 15 was our deadline to submit our application, so that's why there's so many right now. They did make us aware, there was $7.34 million that is currently available in the pot with the applications that are there right now. There's a little over, I think it was $8.4 million of requests that were there. So Kurt and I had some great suggestions of which ones they could cut and then fully fund all the other ones, but we didn't quite bring that up. So basically, they're fairly strict. They give you 10 minutes as far as the presentation is concerned. So we had a fairly condensed presentation that we put together, but we crammed a lot of information in about seven and a half to eight minutes. We worked with Mike Bell from RDG that actually put some poster boards together for us. We got a couple more downstairs. We also had a 21 slideshow presentation that we did. So Kurt and I kind of switched back and forth on portions of that as we went through that presentation. We felt really good with how the presentation went. Even though they said you get about 10 minutes for your presentation, I think we were there discussing the project and the information with them for probably about 20 minutes. So after our presentation was done, they did ask a number of questions, a lot of good questions. A lot of them were actually general comments into the location with Highway 60, the Holiday Express, the lake, kind of how the development all works, and you guys have ownership of the lake, how that came as part of the four-lane Highway 60 project. So overall, it was generally a really good discussion. As I think we're all aware, the big item that they like to get into is kind of the financial. They want to see as many financial options, contributions, participation as possible as part of the project. So we spent, you know, quite a bit of time kind of going through the financial breakdown. One of the things we were kind of excited to share with them, and then also share with you, is we did get a sizable additional private donation. At this point, it's an anonymous donation. We have been made aware, we have an additional donation of $500,000 in pledge towards the event center project. So we did share that with the board on Wednesday. We made it critical with the individual that we're working with and talking with Mike Bell that that would be extremely advantageous in leveraging that towards our application process. And the board was excited to say that. They didn't specifically come out and say, hey, you need more private donations or donations towards the project. So with that, we're a little over $685,000 in private donations, and that doesn't include, you know, the contribution from the county, the hotel motel tax contribution from the marketing committee, et cetera. That would bring us close to over $700,000. So with that said, we kind of went through, you know, the project items and the financials is where we're at, the city contribution. A couple items that they brought up is they made us, they were fairly blunt in being aware that, you know, we're asking for 25% of our project. Most projects, they fund between maybe 18 and 20%, so made it pretty clear. The odds of us getting $1.3 million is probably not realistic. They didn't lend a number other than the 18 to 20%, which is probably in the $900,000 to a million-dollar range. But once again, they didn't lend themselves to make any commitment there. Basically, how they left it, what they would like to see, and I actually emailed early this morning with Nicole Shayla from, who is the program manager for Vision Iowa, and she did send back to me as far as maybe a couple items that we need to bring back to them. One is level of county contribution. Knowing we probably wouldn't be receiving the $1.3 million, they'd like to see a larger contribution from O'Brien County. As you're probably aware, O'Brien County does have a formula that they use. It's .0025% on the cost of a project, which was $13,250. Already been in contact with Barb Rohr on the hopper for next week, Tuesday, depending on the direction of the council and how you want to proceed to maybe go visit with the county about an additional contribution. They did make the comment, and just to make everyone aware, one of the members said, you know, if they could make that contribution each year for five years, they'd certainly like to see that. I'll certainly ask the question. I'm not sure how receptive the county's going to be to that. But there are some other, you know, ways and angles. Maybe we can work with the county on being creative with the funding of their upfront participation and pledge right now, and we work with them with a project down the road of kind of more or less returning that favor. So those are maybe some items we can talk about with the supervisors to see what's where it's at. One other item that they specifically didn't address at the presentation, but Nicole brought up in her email, was more individual fundraising component. We did make them aware that basically the $500,000 gift and private donation is kind of from an individual or from a family, not necessarily, you know, specifically from a business. So I'm going to make sure that I share that with her. But they also are basically to cover that gap if there's an additional fundraising or other component of fundraising that we can include to cover that potential gap. They would like us to do that as well. I think that's kind of all I had down. So with that said, you know, that's kind of where we're at with the application. The next Vision Iowa meeting is December 9. Once again, they don't come and indicate really anything at all that, hey, at that one, we hope to give you more direction on and let you know where you're at with funding. If we would come back with them of potentially additional county contribution and maybe some other private donations or contributions, I think would lend itself to go a long ways in moving to negotiations on that final number. But you know, that, like I said before, this process generally takes, you know, maybe three to four months. There was another project that was before us. They were kind of joking around with them, and he only was asking for $60,000. He'd been there numerous times. I think he'd probably been there, it had to be at least five, six different times or whatever, before he even was awarded the $60,000. But he had a lot of other items that he had to get, I think, cleared up for him as well. So that's kind of where we're at in the presentation as far as the project. I think one other item, just want to make you aware, we had extensive conversations with Mike Bell from RDG Planning Design, that of course has been helping us with the project and the designing process, kind of talking about project timeframe. He estimates from a final design, if we would proceed and want to move to a final design, he's talking probably a minimum of two months. He also wanted to make us aware, bidding timeframe, you know, generally in the January, February, March timeframe is probably the best time to bid a project if we want to get started yet, you know, in spring or sometime in 2016. Otherwise, he would recommend pushing it back to, you know, a summer-type bidding or early fall-type bidding project to potentially start in the fall of 2016, or again, bid it for a 2017 project. He said your contractors, you know, generally in January, February is probably when they're looking the hardest to line up their projects for 2016. So if we wanted to move forward on that, he would recommend doing that sooner than later. So wanted to make you aware of that as well. So I'm open to any questions or additional information that I can provide to you, or I don't know, Kurt, did I kind of cover the general gist of what was discussed and where we're at and what Mike had to say?
Like Vision Iowa, did they ask you how far along in the process of design and that we were?
We did. We made it very clear through our preliminary designs information. We went through the floor plan with them, made them aware of our meetings that we had with our committee and our public meetings to get, you know, public input on some of that design. Then I think kind of at the end, I kind of made it clear in our final comments is, you know, it's our intent based on funding and moving forward. If we can get all that lined up or whatever, we'd like to, you know, get it out to bid in early 2016.
Is that what they're looking at, is how soon you're going to bid? Or doesn't that really play into the...
I don't know if they really care, to be honest with you. They didn't lend themselves to that. I think they kind of work on their timeframe, and if you need the money bad enough, you'll kind of wait and work their schedule. Now, what we do on our end, the only item you probably can't proceed with is construction. If you'd have to, if you had to purchase ground or purchase a building, you could do that ahead of time. But any type of construction, dirt work, all that, I mean, you can do the preliminary design, final design, and all that stuff or whatever. But any type of construction or whatever would probably make your project ineligible for funding.
We don't know definitively when we'll hear back from them, yea or nay.
Once again, if I go back with more information, if I'd go back today with the same as where we're at today on December 9, I don't anticipate we'd be any further. If I go back and I have some type of direction from the county, and if you give us direction and Kurt and I start doing some additional fundraising and try to leverage some more dollars out there, and then come back with some additional funds, I think that could bode and go a long ways. They were excited. I felt very confident based on some of the other projects and applications presentations we saw. I mean, we got our ducks in a row. We're in a really good financial position. I mean, with where we're at and what the council's approved as far as leverage of support, we're ready to roll. But that's just kind of the game they play.
So before our half-million-dollar anonymous donation, where were we at with pledges? Wasn't it a little over 200?
Yeah, that included the county.
Okay.
And the marketing, so $185,000 of what we refer to as private fundraising. So that's what brought us to the 685.
That's where I thought, where's the difference? Okay.
Yeah, we separated out what they liked to see, and we kind of had a breakdown for them. They like to see, you know, we had the hotel motel tax, the county contribution. So we separated that out from the fundraising component because that isn't really part of fundraising. That's kind of a requirement that they look for. The more funds and areas that you bring money in from, they like to see that, so.
See where it's coming from. Well, I would highly recommend, that's our next, part of our next step is, yes, having Kurt, maybe yourself, too, is start to go out and actually campaign because the contributions that we've gotten really hasn't been an active fundraising campaign event. So I think that would be beneficial.
If we would move to the, if I understand you correctly, what you're asking us for is to move to the design stage?
Yeah, we've done the preliminary design. Final design would be our next step.
And Mike Bell estimates that cost to be how much?
It's not 100% broken down.
All part?
The total, all the way through construction administration, additional costs was roughly $270,000. I know, Todd, you remember percentage-wise, I think similar to preliminary, I'm guessing $150,000.
So it would be somewhere less than $270,000, is what you're saying?
Yeah. I'm guessing preliminary design was 148. I'm guessing final design will probably be the same, and then the rest would be towards construction administration and contracts.
Am I correct in my assumption that this is eligible for TIF funding?
Yes, I...
TIF funding that we have in place and have in the bank, so to speak?
Right.
Make a motion that we proceed to the next stage of design?
Okay, now discussion.
Just one comment with that, if you, with that motion, one of the items, and maybe we can make it a separate motion, what bound council and I actually conferred with them to make sure we can transfer whether we, because you can't use TIF as cash, you have to request reimbursement. So we'd pay for it with a different source than request reimbursement. Either in that motion or in a separate motion, we would need council approval to certify this as TIF debt, and therefore we can pay back with using TIF.
Okay.
Is that part of your motion?
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yeah.
Make that a part of your motion?
Yeah. I'll amend my motion to include that.
Brad, you continue to support? Okay.
And I think, you know, I'm a firm believer that the longer you wait on public projects anymore, we need to go to, we need to get ready to go to bed. And even if we do go to bed, we might find out that we can't afford this project. I hate to say that, but you got to be real on that. But we're never going to know until we go to bed.
Right.
And so I think that we really, truly need to get us in a position where we know exactly what the dollars are going to be. I've watched public projects in my career, and I can tell you that every time they waited and then they ended up doing them, all they did was spend more money. I look at what we, how successful we were with that pool project and what a great asset that has become for our community. Yes, it does cost us some money, and I was pretty adamant about making sure that we always understood that. But yet, it's still a heck of an asset for our community, and having the ability to have paid for that six-plus years in advance is amazing. And I think that stands to the council's credit, so that's why I think we ought to move to the next stage. I'll be gone from then on, and then the boys can decide and the girl can, they want to continue or not, so.
Is there any other comment? Do you have the motion down? Would you mind repeating? Just so that, we're going to use TIF funds, but the clarification of, does anybody need that repeated? Okay.
I got a comment. I mean, I agree with Ron. Pool is a great asset. My main concern is that $107,000-plus operating expense every year that we're set to lose. And I just, I mean, that bothers me. You know, how are we going to pay for it? You know, we got water, water plant updates coming, we got, you know...
Different funding mechanisms.
I understand that.
Yeah.
I understand, but it's still, we're still paying for it with taxpayers' money.
Right. But we've also haven't put it out...
We don't know what the ball field, the new ball field facility's going to cost yet. I just, I mean, I agree. I mean, we can fund the, we can pay for the event center, but it's the operating costs that go forward that are, that's hindering me.
Yep.
That's what it is.
And I, very good point there, Randy, and I know staff-wise, discussion-wise, and I think with the timing of where we're at, when, you know, our December 8 planning session coming up, I think it's going to be a critical discussion to see once what, what falls on the priority list of items we have to discuss in going into budget timeframe, you know, of hammering that out. Because, you know, we need to know from a staff direction standpoint, knowing there's a cost for that facility, you know, of how we're going to do business day-to-day, of covering, you know, all those, all those items from a cost standpoint, so.
And I agree. I mean, if we don't go to the final design and get the hard numbers...
We don't know.
We're never going to know.
Right.
We're going on assumptions. So we have to spend the money to do it, but I always come back to, you know, there's not a lot of banks that a business comes into town and say, hey, I'm going to lose $100,000. You want to loan me $3 million? I mean, you know, they're going to laugh you out. Now, this is a little different, but it's still, you know...
And who knows? When we get to that bridge, too, and we put out, you know, request for proposals for other people to run it, it could be less of an operating cost. But we'll get there after we get to the final design phase.
I hear lots of good comments about it, about the project and that, so just want to throw that out there.
You know, it's interesting to me. I have not had one person come up to me and complain about the $50,000 to $60,000 we lose a year in the swimming pool. All I hear is people saying, good for you guys for going forward on that project, you know? And yes, we stand a chance of losing, frankly, I think it could be more than $100,000, you know? But depending on what kind of a organizational structure can be put together for the marketing of events, for trying to get events, I talked to Pete Wagner, and he is just all excited about the opportunities that present in the, in his entertainment world, so to speak, that he is very active in. And boy, if he could land half of what he was talking to me about, frankly, I don't think income's going to be much of a problem, but if he talks cheap, takes money to buy whiskey, so I understand exactly what you're saying.
You know, and a concern I have, too, you read the paper, I mean, Bridges Bay just built a event center. Now, we were hoping to grab from Spencer a little bit, you know?
Well, Spencer has their own event center.
They do. But I mean, that's another piece that we're getting taken away from.
Right.
Yeah, the demographics and the operational study, and I mean, actually, the Vision Iowa Board brought that up, too. We made them fully aware. They have a copy of that, that operations study we did, and they said, yeah, we see you have, you know, proposed $100,000 gap in there. You know, so they're certainly aware of it, too. So we had a good discussion about that, too.
Some of the questions that people will ask me is the amount, the total amount for the whole event center. And I think many times people, they're just not fully informed that this isn't just a building, this is everything.
It's not the park?
No, it's not the park.
I'm not saying the park.
Oh.
I'm saying it's a building, it's landscaping, it's...
Talking the infrastructure to get to the park and the road.
Exactly. It's the HVAC, it's the audio, it's, you know, it's not just a steel structure with windows or stone, it's the whole building. So not the park, but, you know, it'd be nice if we could somehow let the public know the breakdown of costs. I don't know if that's doable, but that's something I get, is I could build that for a million, but will it include plumbing and toilets? You know, everything.
We can't get to that point until we get to the final design.
Exactly.
There's a lot of question marks.
Exactly.
It's not always gonna be there until we continue to get further into it.
And once, once you inform them, then it's, oh, okay, I didn't realize it included all that. I thought that was just to build a structure. So the more that we, as the council, and myself, and, you know, city staff can let the people know, the five point three is not just for a building, it's everything to get the event center turnkey, let's go. So that helps. Anyway, is there more discussion because we are in the middle of a motion? Okay, if there's not, thank you for sharing. Randy, do you have anything else? Okay, I was just, sorry, sitting up, and I didn't want to cut you off. Then may I have a roll call, please?
Rensing?
Aye.
Kent?
Aye.
Funker?
Aye.
Sawyer?
Aye.
And then, as part of the next step, too, then Kurt, Scott, will be fundraising campaigns.
Yeah, I guess maybe a thought, maybe some feedback from the council. We haven't ever really sat down and discussed, you know, a full-fledged fundraising campaign. I know one of the discussions, you know, some of us have had in regards to all the other elements of the park, whether it's racetrail, development of the pond, the piers, shelters, playground equipment, et cetera, you know, what's the sense, I guess, of the council, I guess, going forward? You know, do we try to solicit some additional donation and fundraising? Do we, do we want to do more of an active-type campaign? Just looking how far you want us to go.
I don't think it would hurt anything. I mean, you got a certain amount pledged basically from the private sector as is without asking for it. Why not go back to them, thank them for it?
They asked the question, because to let you know, I mean, we have the additional five hundred thousand dollars, you know, they're not blind to see, you know, we originally committed three point six, so I took that off the city's portion. We're down to three point one as far as our commitment, and I think we had a good explanation for them. I mean, we're talking ten to twelve million dollars worth of projects that was built in that community park master plan. I said this would allow the council to maybe proceed sooner than later on other elements, you know, of, of the park, you know, whether it's trail or other park development-type items. So I think they're happy to, you know, hear that, and, you know, this isn't the final thing, this is one of the priority projects to get us to move forward in there. But that's maybe a further discussion as we get into our planning sessions here coming up, you know, whether we get into the park and all of our other elements, as Randy mentioned, you know, with water, wastewater, et cetera, kind of identifying our priorities as far as funding.
And you might get somebody that might want to donate more to the park than to an event bill.
Right.
And we have in the past, I mean, we have dollars earmarked, you know, with trails that are specifically earmarked at four trails for a shelter house along the trail somewhere out there, you know, and we can set that aside.
And get creative with, you know...
Okay.
Okay.
Well, if you do, let it, let me know or let Kurt know if you have any additional thoughts on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for going out both of you and making the presentation. It's good to hear. Last on our agenda, are there any comments?
I have one. When we originally did that street between Rosa Boom and Lori Groot, one of the things we had talked about, and I don't know whether it was us or trails, but we had talked about maybe putting in a little mini park or sitting area or something in that extra land that Larry had included just to the south, I believe, of the road.